At the call of order, the October 16th meeting of the Chicago State Department of Education. Mrs. Brino, would you please take your time?
Mrs. Garby.
Here.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Mrs. Prados.
Here.
Mrs. O'Toole.
Here.
Mr. Kanziger.
Here.
Will you please join me as we stand and face the flag from the Capitol podium? Let's welcome to the flag, the United States of America, and the Super Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this soul, with liberty and justice for all. This is one point in our meeting where we invite public comment. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak to the board? If so, I have some guidelines I'd like to share. You just need to be very busy. Seeing none, we'll move on to the board reports. At this time, the board will share board committee updates. Please prevent a summary of the last meeting and what's happening at the next meeting, or just say no for it, there's no meeting. For the audit committee, Mrs. O'Toole.
The audit committee met last Thursday, October 10th. We had excellent attendance. Actually, our new treasurer was able to meet all three committee members that serve on the committee, Bill Gans, Chair Guti, and John Ellis. Two representatives from Ray Associates Accounting Firm were there and went through the representation letter, like the audit planning schedule, the risks, purpose, things like that. Typically, our audit is done early for them, but this year, due to the transition in our department, things are a little behind. So it makes sense to request an extension this year because our timeframe and the auditor's timeframe don't... You know, everyone wants their audit done by the end of December, and they can't do that. So we're probably going to request a one-month extension this year. And the committee had no problem with that at all. The only downside to the exception is that we will not be considered for one of the awards that we typically get. And I think we can look back on the year when our treasurer department was... We had an internship, yes. And then we... So we expect to meet again for the post-audit meeting, which typically would be in the summer.
The board health committee, Mrs. Rose. The business advisory committee, Mr. Rankin. Capital planning, that is me. We did have a change. Our next meeting is going to be on October 22nd at 6:30 PM in the Sands Community Room. This is going to be a joint meeting that will bring together all of the committees that are involved in planning capital projects and financing them, namely the facility master planning committee, the board finance committee, and the board capital planning committee. The idea is to streamline the integration of all the excellent work that's been done on the master plan, the annual EPI projects, the five-year forecast, and our debt capacity into a game plan that the board can hopefully look comfortable with making work. The board finance and budget committee, Mr. Rankin.
We had a meeting on October 7th. So we had a variety of board members and public members there. We went through the five-year forecast. We have some continuing work to do on the capital planning portion and also the debt capacity. As you mentioned, on the 22nd, we're going to pick up again on those committees in a joint meeting.
And records retention has now been worked this evening. At this point, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Hunt, superintendent.
Thank you, good evening. I love to say we always have this much in the memory of the audience. Certainly a special night and probably one of my favorite board meetings of the year as we recognize students for a variety of achievements. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Quinn here in a moment, who will introduce the various students that are being recognized tonight. But I want to just commend and thank all of the students here. Obviously, there's a level of academic capacity that it'll let you have to have to get seated here tonight and achieve where you're at. But there's also a lot of hard work and grit and time spent and dedication that have led you here tonight. So we're very proud of the efforts that you've put in. Also, I want to recognize and thank our parents. A child gets to where they're at or seated here tonight without some support from home. So thank you very much for that as well. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Quinn, and she's going to take us through the various awards to be recognized this evening.
Well, thank you so much. I will echo what Mr. Hunt said. This is my favorite board meeting of the year. This is such an exciting time. When I look out into the sea of students in the audience, I could almost cry because everyone's so grown up. So many of you have been at these meetings before and been recognized for so many years. And wow, it's amazing. So I'm so happy that you're here with us this evening. All of the students that are being recognized this evening have truly realized our district mission and really have maximized their potential in a variety of ways. The first student that we would like to recognize this evening is pretty outstanding. She is a state's award winner for the Power of the Pen Competition. We had students back on May 24th of 2019 that traveled to the College of Luister, and they competed in the Power of the Pen Competition. She, not only in four rounds of writing, scored in the superior range for all four rounds, but in the power round, she scored an unbelievable 99 of 100 points, which is amazing. She was awarded first place in the state of Ohio for the Power of the Pen Competition for eighth grade. So we are just incredibly proud of her efforts and her achievement. And so we would like you, Marie, to come up. Visit Ms. Benko over here to get your award and come up to shake some hands.
Nice job. Do we have any parents that are new to get?
Congratulations. So we're going to move on to our Numex participants. Numex is the Northwestern University Midwest Academic Talent Search. You might ask, well, what does that mean? It's a program that is designed by the Center for Talent Development at Northwestern University and provides students with opportunities to take above-grade level assessments. So in grades three through six, that would be the PSAT 8-9. In grades six through nine, that would be taking the ACT or SAT. Yes, it is the real ACT or SAT that typically our juniors and seniors would take. So why would a student that's in those grade levels participate in Numex? Well, first of all, those students are really seeking to challenge themselves and maximize their potential. But they're really seeking to see what those tests are all about before it's going to count and really be reported to colleges. They're also taking those tests to see how they would compare, how their results norm against students who would typically take those tests, the typical age student, but also how their scores norm against other gifted and advanced students across the country in their grade level. So it provides outstanding information to families to help with planning for students. So we are going to recognize tonight the top-scoring student per test, per grade level within our district. These students were students who participated in the PSAT 8-9. In third grade, our top scorer, this is third grade in last year, is Jack Shine. Perfect, we got it down. In fourth grade, this was last year, Saina Bedataria. And Jack, if we could ask you to stay up here, and then we'll get all of our Numex participants.
That's all right.
These are our ACT participants. In sixth grade, in last year, that was Jackson Kula. In seventh grade, Kate Quinn, who's not here this evening. She's at the eighth grade football game cheering the rain. In eighth grade, Katherine Azalina. And in ninth grade, Calvin Strachmard. The SAT, Benjamin Lewis in sixth grade from last year. Seventh grade, we had a high-score tie with Shlup Bedataria. And Ethan Keven. And finally, in eighth grade, we had Sophia Lewis. Once we have a certificate, we can get a group photo of our Numex participants. Chris Wifter typically does a great job of tweeting out photos. So if you have a pic that you missed, please check Twitter, Chris Wifter. So congratulations again to all of our Numex participants. We're so proud of your efforts, and it is super, super challenging to take one of those tests and persevere. So we're really proud of your efforts. The next group of students that we'd like to recognize are those students who successfully completed a bridging program. We do bridging both in math and science. So what is bridging? Bridging is really the provision of content to help students move forward when they're ready. Again, we do it in both math and science for a variety of reasons. We might do it for a student who is accelerating, is a gifted student. We might do it for a student who has shown tremendous growth in a school year and is ready to go into advanced coursework. We might do it for a student that is new to the district, that has moved in and is a gifted student, but was served in a different way in a different district. What I can tell you, the common theme for all of these students is that there's a lot of independent work. Students are working quite a bit online in a blended kind of community with the support of a real teacher. But it is a tremendous amount of work on the part of our students. So they're truly to be commended for their effort, their perseverance, and their commitment to completing the bridging program. So the first group of students that we'd like to recognize are those students who completed math bridging over the summer, most of them, and are successfully now enrolled in an advanced math course this fall. And so as I announce names, if you want to come up again, shake hands and get your certificate in swag. Jack Shine. Brigitte Edwards. Ella McBeve. Jake McClintock. Harper Stewart. Clara Zabich. Calvin Dees. Kartik Gulati. Will Wagner. Brendan Donnelly. Eva Austin. Lucas Martin. Kaia Sherman. Brady Farah. Johannes Roar. Anastasia Shersky. Sid Austin. Aiden Buna. Bianca Van. Jalen Sears. Kais Kaneski. And Stella Fransting. And since this is a big group, why don't we get our math bridging students all together in one picture? The next group of students that we'd like to recognize are students who successfully completed the summer bridging in science. This really was an opportunity for our advanced gifted students going into eighth grade to embark upon a pathway that really took them throughout the summer, visiting the eighth-grade Earth and Life Science Standards, working pretty much independently, but having some check-in sessions with their teacher, and taking a test at the end of the summer to evidence their mastery. Students who did evidence mastery via an assessment at the end of summer have been enrolled in Advanced Physical Science this school year. That course is kind of a really neat offering because not only does it pick up the eighth-grade physical science standards, but merges it with the high school physical science standards. And students that are finishing that course this year will have that course on their high school transcript, which is awesome. So we are extremely proud of these students. For all of their hard work all summer long, their achievements, and their perseverance throughout. So without further ado, Anna Baker. Amelia Benko. Shlup Bedataria. Drew Blair. Andrew Bradgett. Thomas Brennan. Gillian Bunker. Erin Bertard. Charles Busby. Liam Busler. Ethan Keven. Libby Kane. Jason Chang. Ava Chess. Alex Chenese. Sophia Clark. Benjamin Cowan. Evelyn Cravens. Abigail Ellis. Caitlin Evans. Isabella Branco. Philipina Janstacia. Elena Goodwin. Sophie Hill. Samantha Holtz. Clara Ives. Claire Darvis. Zoe Jones. Paul Kilby. Charlotte Klowgi. Redmond Claus. Hallie Markham. Riley McClintock. Tyler McCourt. Kelly Meter. Alessandra Mitchell. Kira Moran. Natalie Newmanitis. Isabel Nerpone. Lindsay Nielsen. Sven Nielsen. Margaret Oliver. Elizabeth Cartine. Margaret Peace. Sally Pierce. Nora Pope. Charles Reader. Julia Richard. Nicholas Rody. Elliot Rogers. James Rose. Alexandra Sharp. Lindsay Schumacher. Duncan Scott. Kaylee Stett. Oliver Tepper. James Wilkinson. Tatum Anchar. And Joseph Zimmer. This is going to be a big photo. And I wanted to add, I know some friends of students here, and you might know some of the students announced that did not come for this group. Since it's all eighth graders and it's a big eighth-grade football game tonight that started late, it's very possible that a lot of folks that are still coming are still in the game. So we understand life happens.
Okay, ready, one. Six smiling faces and two. And I think I've gotten everybody to breathe. Good. Does anybody else want to sing?
Today was actually PSAT Day, for those of you that didn't know. We had, every October, in fact, we administer the PSAT 8-9 to all of our eighth and ninth-grade students, the PSAT NMSQT to all of our 10th-grade students. And it is always an option for our 11th graders to take the PSAT NMSQT for National Merit Scholarship consideration. Those students that opt as 11th graders to take that are really challenging themselves, pushing themselves, and trying to maximize their potential. The students that we're recognizing this evening are students that took, as 11th graders last school year, so October of 2018, took the PSAT and performed quite well and have recently been recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. The first group is the students that have been recognized just recently as a National Merit Scholarship commended scholars. These students have scored in the top 3% to 4% of all students who took the PSAT nationally. So it's pretty amazing, pretty outstanding. So we are incredibly proud of the achievement of these students and for putting themselves out there and taking the test as 11th graders last year. So I'd like these students to come up, please. Tyler Stinson. Damon Hunter. Tyler Feeny. John Hiyachi. Carolyn Benko. Alexis Christie. Benny Song. Robert Snyder. And Jenny Kanziger. Congratulations. The next group of students that we wanted to recognize were 11th graders last October and also took the PSAT. They've been recently recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation as semi-finalists. So they will compete for 7,600 different scholarships that are worth more than $31 million. They should find out somewhere between April and July of 2020 as to whether or not they are finalists and are receiving awards. We are incredibly proud of them. We're excited about the future to see what it holds. So we'd like to recognize these students at this time. Maggie Mills. Parker Bros. Grace Lee. And Anna Cimorkian. And so before we end and part this evening, I really feel like it's important to thank all of you families that are out there for all of your support. Our students would not be recognized for things like this and would not be maximizing their potential without you. And I truly feel like you deserve a round of applause.
So thank you very much for attending. I will speak for our treasurer, Mrs. Brudno. You will not defend her if you're not here for her financial report. We know you don't get here without spending all those hours studying. The one deal I have is we have way too many extra cookies, so please grab a cookie. You're welcome to stay for our meeting, but if you do want to go, now's a good time to slide out. And congratulations once again.
Chazzy, you've got a relatively lovely nature cover.
Yeah, it does get a little lonely in here.
You can keep asking any time.
I'm excited for you here. Hey, let's hear it.
Yes. Sorry. I apologize.
So at this point, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Brudno for the treasurer's report.
Okay, so I was asked by the board to sort of facilitate a discussion about evaluating our financial information and what is important to us, how we measure ourselves, what do we measure and how do we measure it. So the amount of financial information that's available is, can be overwhelming because I present reports every month. There's monthly information. When the report card comes out, there's financial information there. In November, I'll be presenting the budget forecast. There's information there. So just to try to kind of get us all on the same page about what is it, what it is that we really want to be looking at and how we want to look at it. So in evaluating our financial information, we have to ask ourselves two key questions. What do we measure and how do we measure it? So there are seemingly endless data points that we can focus on. Tonight, what I'm going to focus on are just the items that I chose that seem to be the most important, the things that I'm asked about the most. Obviously, when we make financial decisions on these, on all these data points, or using these data points, rather, we don't just look at the dollars. We don't just look at the cents. We look at how these things affect our educational process and how it's going to affect our kids. So in looking at all of these numbers, you know, it's really easy to just look at the dollar amount and say, well, we want that dollar amount to be S. But we, as a district and a board administration and so on, we are faced with looking at these numbers, not just as numbers, but how they affect what we do every day in our classrooms and how we make decisions to possibly change what we're doing in those classrooms, how we plan for the future, and how we continue to make sure that we have the resources available to do what we want to do in a classroom. So the items that I'm going to talk about here, total dollar amount, obviously, year-over-year trends. A lot of times, people want to talk about how much one specific line item is increasing or decreasing. Those are, those categories are important. Ratios and percentages. How much money do we spend in classrooms versus on our buildings? Those kinds of things. Comparisons to state average and comparisons to other peer districts, which in and of itself is a very large conversation that I think is worth having. But for purposes of tonight and purposes of just kind of showing and facilitating this discussion for the board, I did select some peers. Here is sort of some of the data that we look at to determine who our peers are. So a lot of times, what's important to one person may not be important to another. Some stakeholders want to know how we compare to Geotacatty districts. Some people want to know how we compare to Agogha districts. We want to look at demographic data. Do they have the same number of students or approximately? You know, it's not very useful to compare our district to perhaps an urban district with 10,000 students. So these are the, these are the districts that I have selected. Certainly, I think it's a conversation we need to have amongst ourselves to kind of make decisions. And what I am presenting in the future about information and making decisions and kind of evaluating ourselves, who do we want to benchmark ourselves against? Obviously, because we are a top-performing district, we like to pull in those top-performing districts there. So, you know, I have the Rocket River because of their performance index score. We've got Solon, of course. We want to benchmark ourselves against the highest score in the state. So this is kind of the reasoning just behind. I'm certainly not saying these are the districts that we need to always be comparing ourselves to. These are just the ones that I've selected here. So starting with total expenditures is always the first place people go when they want to start talking about evaluating ourselves financially. It's important to look at what we can actually affect with our expenditures. This is a pie chart that you'll see in probably every treasurer's presentation across the state when they do a budget forecast. They're going to break it down like this. This shows you that salaries and benefits is about 75% of what we spend. And that makes total sense. What we do is we educate kids. We do that with our teachers. We need our administrators. We need our custodians. We need our food service and all of these things to operate our district. So it makes sense. 75% goes there. Purchase services is about 13%. The one thing to point out there when we're evaluating that piece of the pie is a lot of that expenditure is items that we don't have a lot of control over. It's services that we need to purchase for students. They're mandated items. Special education situations. These are things that we don't necessarily have control over, but it does go way to that line. We do have control over some of those items, but it's not that we can affect. We can't take that total 13% and say, you know what, next year, we want that to go down a certain amount. Supplies and materials, that's where we really have the most control over our budget. And then capital ally, of course, the 1.36% of the general fund. Typically, what that is is just equipment that we're purchasing for the buildings. Supplies and materials is our books. It's our, it's our general supplies that we use in the classroom, the things that we use to teach our students. That's where we can really control the budget. But as you can see, it's not a very large percentage of those expenditures that we can really affect change there.
Is it, this is just the general fund?
This is just general fund, yeah. So when we're talking expenditures, we're talking expenditures, people want to talk about trends. And it's really important for us to evaluate ourselves using those trends because if our expenditures are going up 15% a year, obviously, we have a problem. So we look at trend data. This is our last six years. We've got total expenditures. I have the dollar amount there for you. I know some people tend to look at just the dollars. And then we've got the annual variance. So when you look at that, that line graph there, we do expect that to go up. It's not a bad thing for that to go up. That happens. 75% of our expenditures we just saw is our people. We give our staff raises because they have to deal with inflation and make their purchases. Things cost more for them. Supplies, materials, all those kinds of things. Inflation goes up, naturally, our expenses do tend to build up. It's just how much do they grow up that we need to worry about.
Actually, could you add a line that's the splendid average slope across five years?
Right. So what I typically do when we're projecting, this is all just actual data. And actually, on the next, on the next slide, I'll give you another way to look at this. But this is helpful when we're projecting into future. Yeah, we certainly would use a trend line and project that out. Certainly, we start there and then knowing the things that are happening in the next year, two years down the road, then we adjust that based on what we know. So I think this one is going to give you a little bit more of what it is that you're looking for. So this shows the year-over-year change. So it's not just the line showing the dollar amounts, but it shows the percentages. So if you start at the bottom, see if I can work there. Starting at 15, you can see in that year, it was a 1.32% increase. Then the next year starts where that one ended. So you can see over the five-year period, it's about a 21% change. So just over 4% a year for that five-year period. So this is one that I do like to use. I think it's useful when we're talking about, you know, like you said, a five-year period shows where those items increased or decreased.
Well, and before we get off, so can you just kind of address the big jump, 13%?
Yeah, so that was a year there was a very large expenditure. I believe it was moved to transfers that, to pay, I'm not sure what happened before that or how that worked out, but it was a free transfer in that.
I think that was, we transferred money in advance of getting the bond so we could start the project. So it came out of general fund, which is why, and then the next year, you see there's.
Right. Right. And you would expect some sort of increase in the next year, just normally. So yeah, that point, that does explain.
Of course, you average those two, you get a better.
Yes. And when we're projecting those things out, when we know that those things are going to happen, we will certainly include those in any, in any projections. This is really just to kind of facilitate the discussion on how we're evaluating ourselves and what it is that we want to look at. So this, I think, is a really good just picture for somebody who, like, if you just want high level, then what happened? I think this is good.
Is there anything unusual that happened in 2019?
I don't know that there was necessarily anything unusual. I mean, over the five-year period, it was a 4% average. So 5%, you know, that's not huge. You did have some increases in, you had a, in your benefits, you had an agreement that was made during your negotiation that resulted in a one-time issue. And actually, there was a terms of additional payment that you'll see this year. So this year, just that benefit line will show.
Ashley, can you just remind me, as eventually we use cost per pupil, how will 2017 lay out of that? Is that general fund transfer going to show up in there? We need to think about it. I'm looking at it both ways.
So cost per pupil, let's just go there. Okay. So cost per pupil is the biggest one. This is the one that everybody asks us about. This is the one everybody looks at. And OD kind of creates an issue for us because they say cost per pupil and then they use two different measurements. So the state report card uses a weighted ADM. ADM is average daily membership or enrollment. So students who are, have special needs, who are adequately challenged, or are English language learners, that typically take more money to educate, they give an extra weight to those students when they do that calculation. So that drives your number of students up higher than your actual students, which drives your cost per pupil down. So we've got, in one place, on OD's website, you can find this number. And then elsewhere on OD's website, you'll find the comp report, which reports expenditure per pupil. And those two terms, the spending per pupil, the expenditure per pupil, cost per pupil, are kind of all tossed around as meaning the same thing. They don't, they don't necessarily get the same thing. The state report card takes everything into consideration. It's not just general fund. It's taking all of our expenditures. And so a transfer wouldn't be considered an expenditure twice, but it does show it. So it's using all of your operating. So there are some non-operating items that would get pulled out, but a transfer is considered an operating. So it is. And then the comp report just basically takes your general fund, total expenditures or total expenditures, just by the number of students you have on your state report total expenditures, just by the number of students you have on your state report with your ADM, and it is what it is. They don't do any adjustment there. So, looking at the two different numbers, looking at the representative state report card number, they call it operating spending per pupil. We like to, of course, compare ourselves to all these other districts. That's the way we really evaluate our cost per pupil, which is what's done. So, it's important, I think, to compare ourselves to the state average, which we were there, and then also to our selected peers. And like I said, these are the peers that I have selected, not necessarily the only ones we want to look at. The two different shades of those bars there are classroom versus non-classroom. I'll get to that in a little bit more detail in a couple slides. But our cost per pupil on the state report card, which was just released last month, is $13,800. So, you can see we do have a higher cost per pupil than several of the districts that we're looking at. However, we're not the highest. And again, looking at this cost per pupil, we have to look at what we're getting out of that cost per pupil. What is our return on our investment? This is a scatter graph that ODE put on their website. I did include it in the super news last month. That red dot there is us. So, what this is doing is taking each one of those dots is the district in the state. So, the red lines, they show where the averages are. So, we are above average in spending. I don't think that's the case to anybody. We are not the top in spending, however. We are at the top three, we go, in performance. So, the return on investment that our taxpayers are getting, you can see, you don't want to be in the bottom right hand there. You want to be in the top, which is where we are. So, I think this is a useful one to evaluate ourselves. It's not just looking at that dollar amount cost per pupil. It's looking at what is the district getting out of that. And I think that's kind of the balance that we're faced with every day as administrators and board members. So, then moving on to the CUP report. This one depicts information from the CUP report, only because it's easier to find trend data, state report card for last year. Some of the districts aren't available. I don't know, it's probably on ODE's website. But another way for us to evaluate our cost per pupil is we like to do it using trends. It's another one of those things. We like to look at the year-over-year changes. So, again, you do expect that line to increase. You expect your cost per pupil to go up as the cost of everything continues to go up. This one's kind of hard to look at, I know. I didn't try and get all of the districts that we're using as comparison on here. You can see we are the orange in the middle. We are not the top orange. That one is orange. We are the middle one. So, you know, I don't think that we are out of the range of reality and out of the range of success. Ours is going up. I'm curious to know what Beechwood is doing to control their costs because certainly we don't want to be, Beechwood, they are way up there. But if you look two years out, yeah, over the five years, they are for that. And for two of those years, they've decreased. So, when pulling information like this and evaluating ourselves and comparing ourselves to other districts, this is something that just kind of pops out. This is something to look at. So, I think this is another way that's important for us to continue to look at. So, contained also in the Ohio report card data is some information on our spending that goes into the classroom versus our spending on other things. So, again, they compare us to the state that's right there on ODE's site. If you pull up our information or any other district, they have our number right next to the state average. So, ODE thinks that's really important. I think it is somewhat important. However, I don't necessarily think the state average is always the best because compared us, like I said, to an urban district or even to a rural district in southeast Ohio, we have completely different situations. So, comparing ourselves to state average, we are putting more into our classrooms than the state average. However, I do like to let you know that this number should kind of be taken with a grain of salt because it's really based on coding. So, if one district codes something one way and codes it to a classroom code versus a non-classroom code, they can affect that number pretty quickly. So, I try as best I can to reference the U.S. manual and really, really, and some of the secretaries right now will definitely tell you that I'm highly stickler for the codes because I really feel like it's the only way for us as a state to really compare ourselves and get as apples to apples as possible to really use the definitions on those codes. So, some of ours are kind of changing as we go because I'm really, really asking about the expenditure. What are we really using this money for? And in some instances, I am kind of moving things to different codes. So, if one treasurer, one district has a completely different philosophy, or if they really just want to up that number, they're just going to code everything to a classroom code and, you know, kind of scan that number. So, it is important. I think it's something that we need to look at. I do think it's important to compare ourselves because, you know, if we're at 50 and everyone else is at 75, then, you know, maybe we're doing something wrong. But I don't think it's the end-all, be-all of what we should be evaluating. Staying on the same track with the spending ratios, looking at, this information here is obtained from the CUP report. So, the report card just breaks us down into classroom versus non-classroom. The CUP report breaks it down into these categories. So, if you wanted to kind of put these side by side, the classroom is really, on this one, it would be instructional, pupil support, and staff support. The non-classroom would be the administrative and the building operation. And again, it's taking all of our expenditures and just pulling out some things that don't work in any of these categories. They're taking out some of the non-operating items. All right. One of the most important ways that we evaluate ourselves is looking at our annual surplus or our deficit. This is something that once, next month, when I present the five-year forecast and into the future, you'll notice I'm always going to be pointing you to that line. Look at where, look at what this year does. Are we spending more than we're bringing in? If we are, that's a deficit. As you can see, in 17 and 19, we did have a spending deficit. That's something that we really keep an eye on. A lot of people really just want to go straight to that cash balance, but I think it's important for us to know as we're making our decisions and as we're planning for our future, to know where this line is and how it affects our cash balance.
Is that just operating or does 2018 include the bond receipts?
This is all general fund. So, this is what would be on your five-year forecast. So, again, you bond receipts are in December. And your expenditure for your buildings, all that, obviously. So, this is another way, another graph that I do like to present on a regular basis, especially when we'll be at the five-year forecast. When we do five-year forecast, it will be projected out, so I'll have it for the next five years as well for where we are expecting to go. This is comparing in each fiscal year, the expenditures to the revenue. So, in years where the gray bar is higher there, those were years of surplus. In years where the orange bar, expenditures exceeded revenue, those are deficit years. So, you can see what that does to our cash. That line there in the middle, that's our cash balance. So, you can see in the years where our expenditures exceeded our revenue, our cash balance goes down. So, obviously, you can't continue that trend for too long or you run out of money. The line, the yellow line there, that's our cash balance policy. So, our policy is two months of operating expenses. So, that line stays pretty consistent, but it does tend, it's not completely flat all the way across. It does change as our expenditures for that year change. So, that's another way that we evaluate ourselves to compare to what our policy is. So, we're not just looking at cash balance, dollar amount. We're also looking at compared to where the standard is that we've set for ourselves. Where are we there?
If we align the sexy yellow line, we're in trouble.
Yes. It's a green line. Our policy drives us to avoid that. And so, we're approaching that. That's where, you know, as the board and as administration, we need to take some corrective action and do something about it. Because our cash balance affects our taxpayer contribution. This is to many, our most important measure in how we evaluate ourselves. So, a lot of times, depending on which district you're talking to, the numbers that they report, and when they compare themselves to other districts, they may use total millage. Total millage is the total mills that have been voted on. Effective millage is the result of Hospital 920, which reduces the millage so that the dollar amount that we can collect on any levy that we have passed, the dollar amount stays the same. As property values increase, millage goes down. So, it's a little bit misleading when somebody reports total mills at 115. It's not really what we're collecting. We're not collecting 115 mills. So, this graph kind of shows, because our property values are so strong, this shows how much we have lost to Hospital 920. So, the lighter portions of the graphs up there are our lost millage. So, if someone reports 115 mills, you'll hear me, you know, kind of always jump in on those incorrect and say, we need to look at effective mills. That's really what we're collecting. So, in comparing ourselves to these districts, we are higher with effective mills and with total millage. However.
That's all residential, right? It's a common.
Yes, it's all class one.
So, if you were choosing to live in Solon versus you were involved, you could say, here's the difference that I'm going to pay to educate my student and churro.
Yes.
But a mill wasn't what's due for a district.
Based on effective millage, yes. It will always start out at the actual millage. When you pass that levy, you'll be collecting your effective millage and your total millage on that levy when you start is going to be the same. But as time goes on and property values increase, then your effective millage goes down.
But then, if you were to say sort of 10-point differential between Solon, that's real. That's.
That's effective millage.
Right.
Yeah. So, it's, yeah, that is, that is real.
So, I don't think that, does that make sense for our team? So, if you have $100,000 house in Solon versus, it's still going to be 10?
Yeah. You compare effective mills to effective mills, you're comparing how much. Now, the next year, you may not be because property valuation to one district may have increased at a degree for the other.
Well, and it gets adjusted whenever the district goes on that or approves the next levy too, right?
It gets adjusted every year. It gets adjusted every year.
Ashley, is this just class one?
This is class one.
Are the values re-sized? It gets redoubled?
Yeah. It gets, the millage is adjusted every year. You really see the difference in those revaluation years. So, part of the reason we need to have higher millage is because of our revenue. So, this takes, this graph right here is showing our state revenue per pupil and our federal revenue per pupil. So, we are not the lowest, but we are darn close when we're looking at all of these other districts. So, this makes sense, looking back at this, that we have to collect more in taxes because we're getting less in state and federal revenue. Our only other source, not our only other source, but our other main source of revenue is our millage and our taxes. So, you can see we are close to the lowest in state. We are the lowest in the federal. The other issue that faces us when we're evaluating our millage and kind of comparing ourselves to all these other districts is how much we can raise when we pass a levy. So, when we pass a levy, $1 raises us between 253, I don't have the exact number, I didn't type it, it's $270 per student. Whereas when we're past $1, they're raising close to $600 or close to $550 per student. So, we have to pass twice as much, nearly twice as much millage as enough to get the same effect on our students. So, really, and we have to take all of these things into consideration when we are evaluating our millage and our taxpayer contribution and when we're looking at levy cycles and total mills and things like that. So, I think this is something that's really important for us to look at as we plan and one of the most important things to look at when we're evaluating ourselves and when we're evaluating how we're doing financially and what kind of stewards we are of the taxpayers So, this is kind of, to start the conversation, kind of brought to you the things that I think are the most important, but I have only one person sitting at this table. So, if there are other items, things that we want to report on a regular basis, on an annual basis, obviously, what we're looking at changes as we're, depending on why we're looking at it. So, if we're looking at, I don't know, what kind of programs we want to implement, we're going to be looking at our total expenditures. If we're looking at millage, we want to be looking at our total mills compared to other districts and all those other points I brought up about taxes. So, this is something that I think is ongoing. I think it's ever-evolving. I don't think that there's a, here's what we should be looking at, and this is what we should look at in October, this is what we should look at in November. I think it kind of really should evolve as we're progressing through each year and through our levy cycles. So, I just think it's really important to understand how we measure it and what, and then go from there and then make decisions on what it is that we want to report to this group and then to our community as well. Questions?
That was great.
Yeah, I have a question. I mean, so, I mean, I just find that, so, each time that we look at the numbers, you know, it's like, well, this transfers in, this transfers out, you know, is there a way for us to, I mean, it's standard accounting to, you know, looking at adjusted numbers so that the charts are more meaningful and stuff. So, maybe, as I was going to ask, we could agree on like, okay, is it going to be like the annual expenditures, you know, net out of transfer or something like that? Because a lot of the transfers are noise and this is standard accounting.
Yeah.
Just to try to take some of the noise out.
And the advanced started expenditures at all, because in the next year, those are coming right back. Yeah, certainly for our purposes, absolutely. In doing comparisons to other districts, it becomes a little bit harder to find that information. You know, we can pull five-year forecasts. There is a line of just total expenditures before. Some of those other items are added. Certainly, we can pull that kind of information if we want to compare ourselves to other districts. And for our own trend data, absolutely, we can compare that. I can, we can look at trends for each line if we choose to do, sort of depending on what it is that we're talking about.
Right. It seems like, I mean, transfers, I mean, we have a systematic transfer out from CapEx. And, you know, it sounds like we're kind of the odd man out and most people don't do that, you know, that they've got millage going in the CapEx. So, it clouds, because it seems like most of our conversation is like, how is our, our numbers clouded, not, oh, this is what we need to adjust out of Solon or Rocket River or whatever.
Right.
So, I mean, yeah, one thing that, I mean, it would take a while for us to structurally address that, you know, and how our millage gets into our CapEx spending.
Yeah.
You know, and then as far as like building new buildings as well, that's going to be a big transfer out, you know, and you're going to be able to see those big bumps with everybody. But as far as our numbers, I think it'd be good for us to always show an adjusted number because otherwise, I guarantee you, I'm always going to ask like, what's that 13%?
Right.
And I'm going to make you explain it every single time.
Right. Yeah.
So I'd rather, rather hit it down to like, then it's like, instead of that, it's like, oh, why was it, you know, 1 for 1 or 2 and 1/2? Oh, that's because this reason is not like, oh, first adjust this number down to 2 and 1/2. Okay, once I get my head over that, then all right, now it's hard. And then we never, the problem is we never really get to the real variance discussion. It's always like, oh, that's a big adjustment. And you just kind of like, okay, check. I'm not, I understand I'm not supposed to look at that number. Now what can I look at?
Right. Yeah, I mean, certainly for our, for our own information, we can absolutely present things that way. When we're pulling and comparing to some of the state data though, you know, there's not much we can do about that. But yeah, if we want to look at, you know, total expenditures and how do we compare, I can just pull back your forecasts. And that's, information is readily available.
So what, maybe to continue that conversation is what expenditures do we want to track and do the care about? Because I think the spending on facilities is a relevant piece to track as well. You know, what are we spending in classroom, what are we, what is the total expenditure per student? So if there's a way for us to grab that, but also with a handful of comparables to also look at what they're doing. So it sounds like the state and the public court don't include non-general fund. If you were to really look at, you know, what is your district spending in total per student? Everything, all in, whether it went to facilities or whether it went to teachers. I think that's a relevant, at least one relevant number.
Certainly, it would be comparing those numbers and finding them for other districts is, is a little bit harder depending on, you know, a lot of districts are posting things online from where we are now. You know, if I can just go to somebody's board, parent board docs, pull, pull their financial reports, that's available. But there's no database where I can just go up and pull total expenditures.
Right.
And, you know, there, we get into a lot of the, the principles fund items, all of these donations that we bring in, federal grants and all that kind of stuff. It does tend to muddy the water and they are, it's not easy to compare those items because they are, they've cost you so much. But yeah, I mean, if, if we are concerned more as a district about total rather than just general fund, absolutely. I know some districts, when they present, and two of my, both my past districts, in the monthly reports, we had a general fund report that looks like the SM2 report that I presented. And then we have one that looked just like that for other funds, depending on which one was reported. PR fund, you know, for a lot of people is, is one of those if they want to see. And if that's something, you know, it's sort of like, like we prepare, that's just, you know, more page rate reports.
Would it simplify for that one purpose of getting kind of a global number? Because you're right, we, we're spending the money that we're getting in grants. But I think what I'm thinking the most of is what is a taxpayer in our community paying per student educated? So that way the, you know, we could bring a lot of supplement with grants or, so maybe that's a different way of looking at it. And that would include facilities, like what's going out of our pockets in this community to educate one child in this community?
That, that one wouldn't be extremely difficult. There might be some variables, but I think we have a little more at tax revenue.
Right.
And then, you know, kind of figure out a way to, to work in if that was a surplus year or a, or a deficit year. And by that, by the number of students.
Right.
And that's not something that's entirely out of the realm of possibility.
And I'm sure they may go back and forth on this in the next few months.
Absolutely.
So I should, some of our members, they want a little bit more time to, you know, consider.
Oh, of course. And, you know, like I said, my, my monthly reports, you know, get kind of in the weeds on some of that. That's, you know, really for transparency, not just kind of us evaluating ourselves. But those, you know, I do view as, as a kind of a changing and marking document at all times. So we can, we can put whatever we want in that document.
And then the, the reason we want it is to evaluate, what does it tell us? What is, is there something that strikes us as unusual or something we need to keep an eye on? And that's the next step that we are, we'll be hoping for from you in the next, you know, six to 12 months is what stood out as something you would have dug a little bit deeper into, what's an area that we as importantly to be, we're conscious of?
Right, and looking at this data, what do we, how do we go forward? And we do the things that we want to do.
Right.
I just want to understand, we, the reason ours is so, how does that gap close? How does each financial house close? Is it because his house gets reevaluated? Or does that mean, does that then narrow?
No, the gap, the gap is never going to narrow unless you have, if, we don't. But if you have levies maybe that are fixed a period of time.
You're saying is if we kept our standard as it was in 1970, we would be collecting this much in a, in a person's, in a lucky, okay.
Yeah, if every, if every levy stayed at the mills rather than dollars, they're fixed at a dollar amount. We pass mills, but it's fixed at a dollar amount. Then, yeah, as property values increase. And I think that's, you know, something that we as all school districts in Ohio face is trying to get our, our taxpayers to understand that. And when they get a revaluation, you know, they immediately think, well, you have money. No, we did, we get the same amount of money.
Does that complete your report? And that does conclude my report. Excellent. Can I get my computer working here? All right, so we're on to the consent agenda items. Can I have a motion for consent agenda items 8A through 8O?
Seven A.
Seven A. I'm sorry, 7A through 7O. And a second? Mr. Hunt, would you like to comment on any of these?
I don't think so, Mr. questions.
Okay. Any discussion? Mrs. Bruno, would you please take the floor?
Mrs. Darby.
Yes, Mrs. Reiken?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose, yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oto?
Yes.
All right, there we go. Superintendents' recommendations. Can I have a motion for superintendents' recommendations 8A through 8D? And a second?
Second.
Mr. Hunt?
Item A is recommendation to accept the resignation of Jim Surwinkle. A long time social studies teacher, athletic coach at Shreve Falls High School. I thank him for his service. I do want to point out that Jim did turn in his second letter, so that David hasn't been on the list since the first time. So I think we'll move to June where he gets back. I'm sure that's due some retirement. I think I'm planning on today, it's time served. So we will focus the position, probably look to hire a longer replacement to get through the rest of the year so we can get to a full and a balanced position in spring. Item B is recommendation to approve a senior at Shreve Falls High School to remain in the district with the remainder of senior here. Per policy, we should start school on first day, so if you stay in the name, we will recommend that. So I do it this evening. Item C is enable agreement regarding energy sales and savings. P for S, P for S is a kind of a consortium called Go in terms of buying energy. It's something important for approximately savings, about $6,000 here, so about 4%. And item D are change orders 53 through 57. Good also, this description behind us as well. And it's a credit back to the district for $117,000. You started seizing some losses that we had hanging out there, papers all went back to the district. The eventual question, if you want to start, the answer is yes. We should have had a final reconciliation coming, that's important, so, so we can wrap the project up financially.
It's okay, as long as it continues to be correct. Any discussion? Mrs. Bruno, would you take the floor? Mrs. Darby? Yes. Mrs. Reiken?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oto?
Yes.
Can I have a motion for treasurer's recommendations 9A through D? And a second? By Mrs. So, two, a second by Mrs. Rose. Mrs. Bruno, would you like to speak to these? Yes. So I lost connection here.
Very, thank you. Okay, so first item on my agenda is financial reports for the month of September. Trying to quick, I know I have taken up more time tonight. First report is the SM2 report. So this is the monthly report. This should be the last month that you see Zeros going across all the way up there. I will present the five-year forecast next month, so we will have some monthly projections to pop in here. So you'll see numbers going across there. What that will enable us to do then is to start making some comparisons to our projection versus our actual. Next report is a general fund summary report for the month of September. What I've included there to the right is similar to previous months. I'm showing year-over-year variances. The biggest variance there is that property tax allocation. There is a note there. This time last year, we had received all of our home center homeback. This year, we did not receive JAVAs until April 11. So you'll see that on November. You'll see another variance for the following month that will just be in the opposite direction there. Next report is general fund expenditure summary. This shows, breaks it down by your forecast line. So I'm again showing fiscal '19 versus fiscal '20, where we are, where we were last year at this point in time to where we are now. Too significant, your benefits there, that is the one-time payment that was made, I believe, in July. This year, so that should start to even out there. Moving on to the financial summary report, this is the summary of all of our funds. Still a few negatives on those federal grant funds. We did prepare all of the final expenditure reports. Those were due September 30th. Those were, have now been approved. So we're waiting for the, the final receipt to come in on those. And those should start to feel a little better as that money starts coming in. Next report is the bank reconciliation for the month of September. Similar adjusting items to the previous few months. STRS is now an ACH. We are not cutting checks for that anymore. Just a little bit faster and cheaper to do it via ACH. But the ACH doesn't actually hit the bank until after, after the month ends. And then the same with the higher taxes. They changed their process and those are, those are getting a little later now. So expect to see adjusting items like this each month. Next report is just a summary of where all of our money is. Star of Ohio is still our best bet right now. Highest yield at 2.25. Holding money in there as long as we can, moving money into our operating accounts as we, as we need it. Keeping enough of a cushion there that we all feel comfortable every day. And then the next report is just a listing of all of the items and accuset numbers and such that are in the investment management accounts after the third. Are you sure on those, if I need one? Item B is then announced certificates. We have a few here. First one is for Applied Laser Technologies. This was a current contract overage charge, so we pay a monthly amount and then in the end we true up. I believe the PO just was not enough to cover it. We had to do a new one. Mace Imaging. This is a copier contract, we just did not have the PO in place in time. Next one is mainline truck and trailer. This was for bus 20, kingpins and alignment. This one, again, just the, the item was ordered and the purchase order just didn't get, make it into the system in time. And the final one is to the illuminating, the illuminating company for electric. And again, this one is, is one where we've had a couple issues with getting the invoice, or getting the purchasers in place because we do so many to the illuminating company. And the way we're breaking them down to try to make things a little bit more efficient and easier, some of those just didn't get in time. Item C is donations. We did receive a $750 donation to Gurnee Elementary School, and the donor on this would like to remain anonymous. And final item is a list of equipment to be disposed of. Yeah, the list is attached there. Recommend to your board.
I have a question about the Gurnee donation. But where will that go?
So when somebody indicates just a building that they would like to go to, what we do is we put it into the OAT fund, which is public school support. And there's a separate cost center for each building. So it went into their account, they can use that. It's, it's used similarly to the general fund. They can use it for supplies, you know, equipment, product, programs for kids, whatever it is that they feel, you know, that is necessary for students. But when, when something goes to a specific school rather than putting it in the general fund and trying to track it, we'll put it in there for the principal to use it there.
Kind of a principal's fund?
It is a principal's fund. It's officially called public school support.
Okay. And there were no other requirements for the use of that donation? It was just a general donation?
The donor just requested that it go to Gurnee.
Does anybody else have any questions or discussion? Mrs. Bruno, would you take the floor, please?
Mrs. Darby? Yes. Mrs. Reiken?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oto?
Yes.
Is there any other business this evening? Okay, our next meeting is going to be Wednesday, November 6th at 6 o'clock in the Sam's Community Room. And then following that, we have a meeting on November 20th, also at 6 o'clock in the Sam's Community Room. Can I have a motion for executive session?
In accordance with the Howard Vias Code 121, to conclude this report for education going to executive session, sole for consideration of common matters.
A second? We don't expect any action following the executive session. Thank you for coming today.